Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 21st, 2020. Welcome. This is our new year, our first committee of the whole meeting for the year. If those of you who are in the audience want to follow along, we have agendas out on the table outside the door to your right. You can follow along. For you, those of you at home who want to follow along, you can go to our website, levonypublicschools.org. Highlight over the School Board tab and you will see Board Meeting Information. And if you highlight on that, you will see on the left, Meeting Agendas, and you can follow along there. We have a fairly full agenda for this evening. If you're turning in to see the in-depth discussion on items that may have been brought to the Board, at least on one occasion, sometimes we have looked at these issues in earlier meetings, perhaps even in December or November, and they're now coming back to the Board. This is the time to tune in and you will see more discussion, more questions, a little more information being brought before the Board. So this is the meeting that you want to attend. We will jump right into our agenda. Item one is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. I do not see anyone bringing any up to the table. So we'll move on to item two, Committee of the Whole. We only have one item, that's item A, Board of Education Officers. It's just a reminder to the Board that we will be electing officers at our next meeting. Keep that in mind. We've had a few discussions. Be prepared to make your selections at that time. So then we'll move to item three, which is our Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you. Our first item is item A, Limited School of Choice, and Mr. McDonald's going to help us with that.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. Today, I'm here to talk to you about our Section 105 and 105(c), Limited School of Choice Programs. We have been doing this program since the 2014-2015 school year. And just want to clarify one thing as we begin. This is the program for out-of-district students, so students who reside in Wayne County. So that's the 105. And the 105(c), which is our contiguous counties, which would be Oakland, Macomb, and Washtenaw and Monroe. Actually, not Macomb. Monroe, not Macomb. And then, so those are different. We do have an in-district transfer process, but that is not part of what we are discussing here today. These are our out-of-district students. At the study session, we did go into a deep conversation about the 105 and 105(c) programs. And in summary, again, we've been doing this program since the 14-15 school year. And it does help to really offset some of the declining enrollment that we're seeing. So we bring in a limited number of students each year, and we are still seeing a declining enrollment even with these students counting into our, into each of our different schools. Last year, or currently, I guess should say, in our 19-20 school year, we had a, up to 195 seats. We did that with 185 of those seats in K-8, and then five seats in both the Kappa and Global Ed programs. And so parents were able to apply for those openings, or spots, or seats, in each of those grade levels or programs. And in the end, we were able to fill 67% or 130 of those spots. With the 105-105(c) program, we get the lower of the foundation allowance between our district and the sending district. So we use an average of about $8,000 with that. And so that equated to roughly a little over $1 million in additional revenue for our district for this current school year. For the 2021 school year, we are recommending to do the same as we did this year, which is up to 195 seats, with K-8 having 185 of those seats, and then five again in Kappa and five in Global Education. And then we would offer that application window, March 2nd through March 31st. And we would be marketing and publicizing. If approved by the Board, we'd start that process as soon as we could, both on our website and any other media that we felt would be beneficial.
Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Mrs. Frank.
Mr. McDonald, I think we talked about it in our study session, but I think it's helpful in terms of, we ask this question a lot about why we do this and what the benefit is. And I think it's helpful for the public to know that it's, in a declining enrollment environment, we can, I've heard people say, you know, just go small. One of the pieces about if we're losing students, say 100 students per year, we're not losing 100 students out of the same building.
Correct.
So that's the reason that we can't just cut a teacher or cut a classroom, because we have so many buildings across the district, and they're spread out, two students here and two students there. So it's very difficult to just say, if we're losing students, to just go small. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. So what this program allows us to do is, we're not specific into exactly what grade levels or to what buildings that we are assigning these students to. So we can see a building that, or a school that has, say, three sections of students that have a really small student count, and we can add to that student count to build up those sections a little bit to a number, as opposed to maybe considering other alternatives, either cutting a section or doing a split section.
You know, I think that's been the challenge over the years with declining enrollment, is you can't cut costs commensurate with the decline in enrollment, because again, it is shared across many schools, many grade levels, content areas. Certainly, we have done a lot of those things that would be appropriate as far as rightsizing staff and facility usage and things like that over the years. And we've made those, brought those recommendations, and the Board has made those decisions as we've moved along, appropriately so. But in those smaller numbers and in those smaller chunks, you're really feeling more of the effect, the financial effect of the declining enrollment. Additionally, one of the things this does is stabilize that a bit so that the decline is more gradual over time. And we're able to assimilate those changes and make some tweaks to our staffing and to our programming to reflect that without having a significant decline over a two- or three- or four-year period.
Any other questions? Okay. And we're going to vote on this next week. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Our second item on our agenda is our school bus purchases, and Mrs. Smith is going to help us out.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. Yes, I have a recommendation for the Board to purchase 22 school buses. And what led to this discussion tonight is, number one, taking a look at the age of our fleet. These 22 buses we're proposing replacing are 2007-year models, and they have reached the end of their useful life. So the team between our Transportation Supervisor, our Garage Supervisor, and our Accounting Supervisor have worked and submitted an application through the State of Michigan for funding that would reimburse the district 40% of the cost of these buses. These particular model years qualify for this grant. So we've been very fortunate to receive news that we are going to be approved for this grant. So that's why we bring this recommendation to you tonight. The total cost for all 22 buses would be in the neighborhood of $2.2 million. And what I'm recommending we do is include a small contingency in case the quote changes by the time we get the official go-ahead from the granting agency to go ahead with the order. So I put into that a $5,000 contingency per bus. But again, the total cost for the 22 buses wouldn't exceed $2.2 million, and roughly $850,000 would be reimbursed to us from this State of Michigan grant. So that's great news. We pooled our resources, yeah, about $850,000 in grant funding to go towards this purchase.
That's huge.
Very, very big. And it's a big, you know, Wayne County's seen a large portion of this funds. This year, it was open just to school districts, and the next round of funding is going to open up to cities as well. So we really wanted to get in on this while we had kind of a priority in the funding. So we're very eager, eager to bring this recommendation.
Mrs. Bradford.
Out of those 22 buses, are some of those going to be propane buses?
They are, actually.
Could you talk about that?
Yes, yes. We had a lot of discussion about this, because our current fleet is diesel and gas, and so this would be bringing the addition of propane into our mix of vehicles. A lot of research was done by our Garage Supervisor, Rick Martin, who stays very current on these topics, attends a lot of professional development, and was very, he wasn't quick to jump to this, because he wanted to make sure he was thorough with the research. And so Rick also met with Harry Lauer, Administrative Operations, and they met with propane companies, too, because there'll be some infrastructure that we'll need that'll go along with this. But the great news there, too, is the propane companies are very eager for the business, and they would actually pay for the cost of any infrastructure needs we have. I think we'll have some minimal cost on our end as far as electrical, but as far as any kind of the structural things that we'll need, they'll be provided by the propane companies. And that'll be further discussion, too, we'll have.
So currently, we have, in the lot, out in our bus lot, we have diesel, gas, and regular gas for our buses. And so you're saying that we may have to do some work, putting in some propane
Yes.
tanks or whatever for those buses?
Yes. And the last time the district had propane, things have changed since then, so they're definitely been needing some updates. They've come a long ways, too, as just far as safety protocols and stuff like that. So the nice thing is the district would have the latest thing available.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? President Johnson.
Mrs. Smith, now with these additional buses, if we go back to the start of the bond, when we bought new buses, where are we in terms of turning over the entire fleet since the beginning of the bond?
This brings us so close, one bus short, I should say, but one bus short. We had, we had 20, we have 23 buses currently that are over 10 years old. 22 of the 23 qualify for the grant. Each year, they increase the model year available for this grant funding. So it would be my recommendation that next year, if the grant is still available and our last bus qualifies, that we apply for the grant for that last bus. But in total, we have 110 buses, and we were able to do 66 of them through the 2013 bond over a number of years. And then over the last few years, out of our general fund and also with some other grant funds, we've been able to bring most of the fleet current. I have to say, it's hard to believe, though, to think our 2013 buses, you know, that were purchased in 2013 are already, you know, going on seven years old, which is just kind of mind-boggling. But that is the life cycle of these things. But with this purchase, it would bring all of our fleet, except for one bus, to be 2013 and newer. So, yeah.
Very nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Mrs. Frank.
This might be Mr. Francis's question. Is 120 buses, is that, are we utilizing all of the buses? Is that a good number for us to keep in our fleet? Is that, are we utilizing them?
Yep. It's 110, and we do, I believe we also have a few spares. They're, you know, old, but really, the 110 is what's in regular use of, you know, of the district. And really, our transportation, when we look at the number of students that we transport, it really hasn't gone down. You might think to like a correlation with enrollment and stuff like that, but not anything that would necessitate.
Allow us to cut runs.
Thank you. Allow us to cut. Yep, exactly.
Really goes along with the question that you had earlier, which is although we may have less students to transport, we're in general still going to the same stops and following the same routes. But I do want to take a moment and just reiterate and commend our supervisors. So Mr. Martin is our supervisor in the garage, and his talented team, and Mrs. Struffin is our Transportation Supervisor, and then Mr. Lau is in Operations, and Mrs. Hicks in our Finance Department. And really, they not only did a tremendous amount of legwork on this project and also applied for this grant, which is significant, an $850,000 grant really allows us to get to that point of being just one shy of replacing our entire fleet of buses. That is remarkable. So beyond the work that they did in all of those years when we were not able to replace them, which was significant to keep all of our maintenance vehicles and buses on the road, they are the best in the business, and we are grateful to have them. And this is just one more example why.
Other questions? Mrs. Smith, can you talk a little bit about what's going to happen with the 22 buses that we're eliminating from the fleet, or what we're going to do with those? And then is there any, are we going to see any revenue from, I think a lot of times we auction some or all of them off?
Yeah. Part of the, part of the deal with accepting the grant is that they really are trying to get the buses off of the road. So the buses will not be used on the road anymore. They will be decommissioned, but there is value in like the metal, and there is some residual value to the vehicles. So typically, like a scrapyard or something like that, we would get some money for it. So it will be not a significant dollar amount, but it is something that we get for the buses. But again, I want to say, and this gets into more of the mechanical stuff, I don't know, but we'll say like they drill a hole in the engine or something like that so that it can't be used again. Somehow, they decommission them so that they know that they won't be on the road again. But again, there's some kind of, if it's the parts or something like that, that does have residual value. And that's where Mr. Lau works to get whatever money he can from the buses. So we'll do that once the new buses arrive.
Okay. Thank you. That's a little different than auctioning them off. So thank you for that. Other questions? Okay. And we're going to vote on this on?
Yes, yes, please.
Monday? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And I guess you're not going very far. So we have Architectural Design Services, and Mrs. Smith is going to help us, and it looks like Mr. Francis is going to be her sidekick.
I've got just a few pictures to pass around. I thought this was quite interesting as we were putting the information together. I think I've got it.
Thank you.
So just to give a little bit of background, what we're talking about here is Architectural Design Services for the Central Office Administrative Building. And it's, just so, I know you know this, but so our community knows, we have a lot of departments that work out of here. Did I, I was one shy. A lot of departments that work out of this building. We have IT, our Curriculum Department, our Secondary, Elementary, Student Services, of course, the Superintendent, Finance Office,
Human Resources.
Operations, Human Resources. So we have roughly 80 employees that work out of this building on a daily basis. In addition, we also have regular professional development that takes place here. Teachers are here on a regular basis, meeting with our coordinators. This past Monday, our administrators were here for professional development. So a very highly-used building. In addition to that, of course, our Public Board meetings are held primarily here at Central Office. And as we look back at this building, very little has been done to it, just structurally over the last 40 years. And so it was interesting, because we've got, you know, of course, a lot of documentation. So what we passed around here is snapshots from the Board Office, and they need very little explanation, because you can tell, you know, what they are. You know, the first picture we're looking at, of course, is the Superintendent's, you know, kind of main area into her office. And then the second picture, although it'd be dark, you can tell is Conference Room A. So we've had a lot of shifts in our department and the staffing and our needs, but we haven't done very much to change the structure of this building. So what we were interested in doing is, you know, starting the dialogue with the Board about what it would look like to do some kind of work here. And we wanted to be mindful of it. If we make any kind of investment here, we want to make sure, of course, we're being good stewards of the resources. We want to be very conservative, too. I know we've got a lot of needs across the district, but we did feel like it was time to take a look at what we could do here at this building. So we've teamed up with Plant, Marine, and Cressa, and we put out a request for proposal to four leading design firms here in the Metro Detroit area. We were very fortunate that all four took time to come and tour the facility and submit a proposal of what it would take to do some program and design work for Central Office. They also gave us a price on what it would cost to oversee any kind of construction that was done here. And so with that, in the packet, we included the responses we received from those four firms. They were all pretty reasonable. The hourly rates between them were between $100 to $152 per hour. Each of the four proposals had a variety of estimated hours included on them. The firm that we were recommending for your approval is a firm called HED. And while their overall estimated hours were on the higher side, their hourly rate was right in the middle. And what we, what really stood out to us is, number one, their experience. They've got a lot of experience with office spaces. But also, the percentage fee that they would pay for overseeing the project was the lowest out of the four. So although we have a little bit more upfront cost, we're going to see some savings should we move forward with any kind of construction at this building. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Okwes.
So as you know, as we went through all of our bond renovations and renovated our schools and each facility throughout the district, we utilized our 2013 bond funds very well and had a great report on that to the Board and the community in December. This facility was never included in part of the plans of the bond in order to make sure that those dollars were focused on the classrooms, on the schools, on the students, on the staff. And as Mrs. Smith indicated, we have some demonstrated need at this facility to do some, not only structural efficiency, but also some mechanical, electrical plumbing and other efficiencies as well in a building that's seen some age. So we have consciously put aside some funds with the Board's approval over the past year or two into our Capital Projects Fund, and we would be utilizing those dollars to do, to make any proposed renovations here. It would not come from the sinking fund or from the bond fund. So we have some reserves in our Capital Projects Fund, and that would be where we would recommend consideration of funding should we choose to move forward with the project. Tonight, of course, we're just coming to with the initial approval to bring a company in to do some design work and to share some thoughts with us on how we could update this facility in a conservative and judicious way, but to bring it, you know, up to today's standards and to really make it more welcoming, user-friendly, and structurally efficient for all of the groups that use this facility, including registration of families during the summer months, professional development throughout the year, and of course, all of the different departments and staff that work here.
Mrs. Burton.
I'm definitely in favor of going ahead and exploring this and getting the architectural firm working on it. And of note, the folks who are largely in this room are aware, but in case anyone missed it at home, we literally had a situation within the last year or two where some windows were falling out of the building. So when a building is 40-plus years and portions of it are significantly older than that, it, just like with our homes, and we said this with our school buildings, there comes a time when we need to have some overhaul done to the building. I'm glad that we're being judicious and we're being cost-efficient about it. I'm also very, very pleased that we are looking at updating all of our school buildings and our areas where our students are first. But there does come a time when it's appropriate also to look at our Central Office building, and I'm glad we're doing it at this time.
Mr. Centers.
Yeah, there's obviously some work that needs to be done here. Anyone who spends some time in here can see that. Not only aesthetically, we talked about some of the physical changes and challenges that make it so that it's not a 100% comfortable workspace, but also it doesn't really reflect the ways people have changed and how they work in styles. The building's very siloed. People are segmented off, and that's not how our district works. People need to interact a lot. So this provides an opportunity to, you know, really lend to what we want culturally, and that's people to work together, cross lines, and help the kids. So this is going to be great.
To Mr. Center's point, HED, the architectural firm that Mrs. Smith mentioned, just to that exact point, they, their process, as they explained it and want to work through it, is to actually find out first what the current use of this building is. So they would like to survey all the employees of this building. They want to gather the information from those questions, which ask about your workspace, your work needs, how you currently use the space that a specific person might have, whether it be the Superintendent, a Secretary, et cetera. So they want to, they're not just going to draw something cookie-cutter and say, this is what we do for everybody, try this. The point of their process is to find out our needs at each different department, and then to move on to the design phase and try to draw something that utilizes the space in this building that's available, but perhaps not being used to its fullest potential.
Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you. I am also in favor of going ahead and exploring some information and gathering information. I do think it's time to do some renovations in our building for Central Office. It has been a long time, and I think we've done a really good job in our buildings with our kids. And I think we also need to be aware that our Central Office staff need some type of a judicious renovation, but I'm in favor of it also.
Anybody else? Oh, go ahead.
In terms of the process and the procedure, Phil, how long are we talking in terms of coming in, looking, giving us some designs, and then how long, obviously, if we choose to proceed with that? Are we talking in terms of actual construction, and how long would that phase be?
Well, the beginning phase with regard to their investigation, if you will, their looksee as to how we use a space, the survey, they would collect that data from the conversations and the meetings that we've had with the HED team. They also want to come in, and in fact, they are coming in at the end of this week, to simply a designer, a mechanical engineer, and an electrical engineer want to come in and walk the building, sort of see how it's used by folks, take a look at some of the mechanical units, et cetera. So all of that's part of that beginning phase, including then getting in that survey data. The next step would be that after they hear from everybody that works in this building, would then be to have individual meetings with the department leads, which would mean the Superintendent, as well as each of the Cabinet members and directors that lead the department, to have conversations about more specific needs, to answer questions, to clarify, et cetera. All of that will be going on January, on end of early February. Their design then would begin at that point. The long game would be to have a bid for work in the fall, which would avoid the summer work that is sort of a crush on the construction trades folks that are out there, and hoping to get not only more availability, but also more appropriate pricing at a time when it's not the rush, rush, and go-go of summer on the local trades.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I would like to say I am very pleased. I know we've been, if anybody's noticed, our, the boardroom, it's fantastic. And I think as a workspace, it's important for us all to have comfortable workspaces, be it light, heat, you know, comfortable with your furniture. We spend most of our days in our workspaces, and you guys spend probably twice as much time as the rest of us spend in our workspaces. And the other thing we have to remember is that this building was built before cellphones, before computers. Everything was paper. We had filing cabinets, probably lining every single wall with all our hard copy records. And it's just, it's a different time. Aside from the aesthetics, there's, and we've talked about just being able to work spaces and stuff, but there are a lot of areas in the building that just aren't being used. We were, last week for our study session meeting, we were upstairs in Conference Room A, because we had a group of parent, I believe a parent group down here, using the boardroom. And fantastic. And it's light, and people are happy, and we've got all the great equipment so that they can throw stuff up on the screens. And it just becomes, makes, I think, is going to make everybody much, it's going to lend to a lot of efficiencies. to a lot of efficiencies. So I am really pleased. Plus, this is the hub of the district. We didn't have, you know, the central server room and all that kind of stuff when this building was done. And, you know, as much as, again, everybody said it's great that our schools have, we've renovated our schools, but there's also a lot to be said when people are new and they come to our district, if they've never been to all those brand-new buildings. You know, this is sort of a representation of who we are. And if we look like we are in the 1940s, I think sometimes people are going to, you know, are they still 1940s? So I'm just very excited about it. So is there, are there any more questions? And we're going to vote on this on Monday, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. You guys good? All right. So we will then move on to D, which is the budget amendment, and Mrs. Smith is going to continue on.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. What I passed out for you, first, we have a cover page. It's kind of our standard one-page snapshot of our general fund, and then we have the budget book that we can also go through tonight. So just a little bit of background, again, we've gotten in the habit of doing four financial updates throughout the year. And in a typical year, we would do a formal amendment in December and June, and then we would do updates in October and in March. And this year, with the passage of the state budget later than usual, instead of doing a financial update in October, we made it a formal amendment. So in October, we did have some additional information available. We knew what our per pupil foundational allowance was going to be. We also had a better idea of what our enrollment was going to be or is. We also got some specific categorical information as far as different state fundings. When we put our proposed budget together back in June and earlier, obviously, we were using estimated taxable values, and so in October, too, we also had some better taxable value information available. So we did do a formal amendment in October, but as just a reminder, time didn't permit for it to really be the full amendment process that I normally go through, i.e., going line by line, looking at last year's year-to-date, and adjusting the current years based on that. So during this budget amendment that we did, we have for you tonight, that was the process of going through line by line and making adjustments as needed. So with that, we do have a few adjustments that I'd like to go over with you specifically for the general fund. We'll start off with just a reminder of where we are currently as of our last amendment in October. We started this school year off with a $30.9 million fund balance, projected revenue of $156.9 million, projected expenditures of $160.1 million, leaving our ending fund balance at $27.8 million or 17.4%. And I always like to put that in context because I know we're talking about big dollar amounts. The Michigan School Business Official recommendation for a fund balance is 15% to 20%. So that leaves us right in the center of where they recommend a district to be as far as a fund balance goes. So as far as revenue adjustments for this second amendment of the 2019-20 school year, back in October when we did the amendment, we had a state aid payment to look at, but we didn't yet have all of our categoricals. So on that October state aid report, we knew seven of the different line items, but now we have information on fourteen of the different state categorical funds. So with that, we have an update to some of our state aid adjustments to the tune of just under $900,000. The main adjustments for that primarily being Section 22B, which is our discretionary payment. 22N, that was cut. That was the per pupil high school student incentive that had been cut from the budget.
It was the $50 per high school student that they had given in the past that had been cut.
Yep. And the last of the big adjustments was our Section 31A, which is money to help us educate our at-risk students. And that, we saw, increased it to the tune of about, I want to say it was $500,000, so a very decent increase for our 31A. The next categorical, because it was so significant, I separated it out, was our Section 147 MIPSes cost. So just a change from last year to this year, and that was a $668,000 increase in Section 147. And I know we've become accustomed to talking about what that is. That is the state's effort to help us with the cost of our pensions for our employees. So retirement costs continue to go up, and we're very grateful to receive these funds from the state that help us pay for those retirement costs. The next is a change in the estimate to our Wayne County enhancement millage taxes. During the amendment in October, I'll finish this and circle back. In October, we updated the Wayne County enhancement millage because property tax values in Wayne County had gone up. So we are anticipating a higher collection for this current year over what we saw last year. We now have an even bigger estimate because of some of the delinquencies that have been collected from prior years and what we're seeing collected this year. So for this year's collection, we're anticipating about $5.6 million from the Wayne County enhancement millage. And so far to date, we've gotten $382,000 in past delinquent taxes related to Wayne County enhancement millage. So that's another addition. So wonderful, wonderful news there. I'll pause. Ms. Frank, did you have a question?
Just going back to this MIPSes. Going back to the MIPSes state aid adjustment, is that an increase in something we've already gotten, or is that a brand-new refund?
An increase to what we've already, we've gotten in the past.
Okay.
They have, within that Section 147, there's about four different lines. Some of it, the one in particular that's the largest, is 147C. And 147C is really an in-and-out for us. If we get, I believe we get to the, about $12 million. We then have to record $12 million worth of retirement expenditures, and it's passed through from the state to us, and then we give that over to the Office of Retirement Services. But in addition to that, there's also other sections of 147 that just help lower our out-of-pocket costs as far as the retirement costs go. So we get additional revenue, and I don't have to record additional retirement other than what's actually incurred on behalf of each of our employees. Moving on to the next, we also had an adjustment for Wayne Reeser reimbursement of special education costs to the tune of about $175,000. And that's based on our, looking back at what our year, what our actual reimbursement was last year from Wayne Reeser for the special ed costs that we incur in our general fund. So those costs haven't gone down for the 1920 school year, so it would be safe to count on that same level of reimbursement from Wayne Reeser for this school year as well. Another adjustment based on looking at last year's year-to-date is our facility usage. So we offer use of our facilities to the community who can rent out the space. And so based on last year's actual revenue collected, I am anticipating an additional $46,000 in revenue from that. And the largest adjustment in hindsight that I can see what caused last year's revenue to be up is the fact that our PACs, our performing arts centers, were open and available for rental. So we've seen some revenue from that. And then last but not least, was just some miscellaneous adjustments. We have, you know, probably at least 100 different revenue accounts in our general fund, so we had some minor adjustments across that to the tune of about $43,000. So in total, this amendment is projecting an additional $2.2 million of revenue for our general fund. So very good news there. I'll move on to the expenditure side. We just discussed a school bus purchase recommendation, and I wanted to put this into the budget to see how, so the board could see that it is within the realm of possibility for us if we did want to purchase all 22 buses. This particular grant does allow us to spread it over two fiscal years if we would like to, but we are in the position that we could do all 22 buses this year if we wanted to. So I did go ahead and put in an adjustment for the full purchase of the 22 buses during the school year. Next is an adjustment. We did adjust last amendment for an increase in the employer contribution towards employees' health insurance costs. And how that estimate came, how I came up with that estimate in October, was taking our current census of employees that take the district's insurance, and then assuming everybody stays where they are, what that cost of the district would be with our additional contribution. So that's what we budgeted for in October, and I guess, good news, we had some additional employees opt to take the district's insurance during an open enrollment. So I'm happy that this budget amendment, we do include the cost of the open enrollment, the changes that have taken place. And so I'm requesting an additional $241,000 to cover those additional health insurance costs in the general fund. So that is on top of the increases that we put in for health insurance contributions during the first amendment. So very nice investment we're making for our employees.
I understand.
Yes. And then again, not to be forgotten, we've got well over 1,000 lines of expenditures in the general fund, and so miscellaneous adjustments across all those lines, but it net to about $46,000 decrease. So overall, an increase in expenditures of $609,000, which then would bring us an ending fund balance for the 2019-20 school year of $29.4 million or 18.3%. And again, that's right in the middle of where that MSBO recommendation of 15% to 20% is. So that's some of the detail. I'll pause if anybody has a question on that. Otherwise, we'll dive into our budget book and look at each fund.
Good job.
Okay? Good, good, good.
Yeah, looks good.
So the first page of our budget book is a snapshot of our general fund revenue. And just a reminder, the district, number one, our budget book is available on our transparency page at the website. So any community member that would be interested in looking at it, you can go to our district homepage, and there's an icon in the upper right-hand corner that'll link you right to the transparency page, and we've got everything really clearly labeled on there. So please feel free to take a look at that and call if you have any questions. So this first page is a snapshot of our general fund revenue. Again, we just looked at what the major adjustments were. One item that I did want to point out, I'll be honest, it was a little irritating to me, but we have an adjustment. It's not a net change for us, an adjustment between local revenue and state revenue. If you recall, in October, I adjusted based on higher property tax values, meaning when we levy those 18 mills, a bigger portion of our foundation allowance coming from local sources, from property taxes. And lo and behold, after we passed that amendment, on October 25th, there was an update on the State of Michigan taxable value website, and in essence, it changed it back. So it's not something, honestly, in the time that I've ever seen it, I haven't seen it take place, so I'm assuming there was probably an error made. The taxable values were updated by the county in July, and then there was this change made in October. It's, again, something we don't normally see, so I'm not sure what caused it. Doesn't have a net effect on the district, but it does mean an adjustment between the revenue between the local and state sources.
It's just on which line item you're finding that revenue. So no overall increase or decrease, but a shift in where that's allocated.
Moving on to our next page is our general fund expenditures. And again, nothing really significant, other than what we've already discussed on the page as far as the school bus purchases included. We have some miscellaneous adjustments. You know, one item to note, we'll see some adjustments between light items, and that's when I did the estimate for the health insurance cost, not knowing exactly where those increases are going to land. So we see just some right sizing different categories to what it actually is. So with that, I'll take us to the next page, which is our funded projects fund. Overall, we see an increase in our, in the revenues from our funded projects. The one I did want to point out in particular is just the expenditure line on the pupil support, just seeing how it shifted from $2,284,000 up to $2,594,000, so an increase in our pupil support. And that's something, it's always, there's collaboration between myself and our program directors, always trying to maximize our revenue and as far as what funds we should use for what staff and who should be paid for out of the general fund and the grants. And again, always just trying to maximize the revenue to the district on that case. But that's a nice, nice to see, again, pupil support going up.
Instructional support?
Yep, the line above it is instructional support, yep.
That's additional support?
Yep.
Additional support?
Yep. And typically in the grants, I say student support. Support could be, you know, other things, but really what comes out of the grant is pupil support. So things like our, the social worker, psychologist, you know, that type of thing. Moving on to the next page is our special education fund. Again, just some minor changes. Overall, though, that ending fund balance being pretty consistent, really nothing significant on that page to note. Next line item, or next budget, I should say, next fund is our food service fund. Nothing major here. I did adjust the revenue up based on our actual revenue collected last year, and I also put in just kind of a placeholder for us as far as expenditures. You know, again, we're in the process of looking at our food service equipment, ovens, different things like that. So kind of putting that placeholder that if we do identify some needs, that we'd have that budget allocated and that we could bring those purchases to the board for approval. Next fund is our health and welfare fund. You know, ending fund balance staying consistent, but did want to point out the increase in premiums as a result of open enrollment. So we talked about that effect in the general fund. So in the health and welfare fund, we see an increase in the premiums, but then there's also, of course, finding increase in the transfers from other funds and then the employee contribution as well. Moving on to our debt retirement funds, only, the only thing updated here, because we do know what our debt schedules are ahead of time, so no adjustments need to be made there, is our, a positive adjustment to interest income. I adjusted that up for each one of our funds, anticipating more interest earned. Moving on to our next page, our scholarship fund. We saw a $100 increase in the donation that was made this year, so reflected that in this amendment. Very good news to share as for our next fund, the 2013 bond fund. We did receive, you might recall, and maybe it was from, I want to say, a year ago, nine months ago, we rebid our wireless, wireless, and we received an E-rate reimbursement. So the team worked to submit whatever paperwork was needed for that. So we did receive $342,000 as an E-rate reimbursement. So I checked with our attorneys, and they confirmed that that, because the expenditure has, had come out of the bond, the revenue generated from that purchase had to go back to the bond, and it could either be put into the debt service fund to repay the debt sooner or be put back into the capital projects fund. Because we know we have ample needs across our district, I put that E-rate revenue into this, into our capital projects fund. And I also made an adjustment, again, we're seeing some very nice interest earnings on our investments. So that's the adjustment there. Moving on to the next page, we've got another, a few capital projects fund, the sinking fund. I did make an adjustment there to our expenditure line. I increased that by $800,000. As we'll see over the next couple of months, we're going to have some projects, the roofs, parking lots, and boilers coming to the board for approval. It's always hard to tell exactly how much work is going to be done before June 30th, so this was just giving us ample room for whatever work is incurred before June 30th. I anticipate a bulk of the work is probably going to be done in July and August, once the students are out. But again, that's just putting that placeholder there so that if more work is done earlier, we'll be able to pay for that. Technology fund, just a minor, again, adjustment to the interest income. And then for capital projects fund, we had some additional sale of equipment that was no longer needed, so put that revenue into our capital projects fund. And I also bumped up the expenditures a little bit, just in light of our conversation tonight about some renovations and making sure that we had some budget allocated there. I do anticipate for our next amendment in, or probably in March, when we do our update, you know, continuing some conversations about different sources of funds for our capital projects fund. But I did want to just update that for some information that we know of right now. So, and I don't want to forget, last but not least, on the last page is our school activities fund. This was a new GASB that came out that created this new fund, and this is simply kind of the district as a holder for our school's activity accounts. Those flow through the district, and so we're now responsible for coming up with a projected revenue and expenditure budget for those, for those line items. But no changes there from our, from our last discussion. So.
Mrs. Smith?
I just had a question about the school activities fund.
Sure.
Sure.
Did the GASB 84, did that, is this district now responsible for those funds? How those funds are dispersed, how those funds are used? Before, they were kind of private, they were not district funds, but now that they're held by the district, are we responsible? Are we responsible for auditing them, that sort of thing? Do they come under our purview of responsibility?
So the shift in oversight, there has been no shift in oversight. We have always oversaw the funds, in fact, we made a shift, I think since, I want to say 2007, the high schools, their activity accounts have always run through the district, so that means they are generating their own funds, but all of the expenditures come through the business office for approval, and that's to just provide oversight, to make sure that everything is, you know, appropriate, that we have all the documentation we need. Within the last two years, we also closed out the activity accounts for our elementary schools and middle schools, they were still operating, independent bank accounts that fell under the district, but we wanted to have the same oversight for our elementary and middle schools that we did for our high schools, so we closed those individual accounts out, and now those payments all run through the business office too. So in light of this GASB, there hasn't been any change in process, we've always had oversight of the funds to make sure that they're being used appropriately. Because these funds aren't coming from taxpayers, they aren't coming from the grants, they do, the buildings do have a large discretion over how they are spent, but again, just to make sure that they are in the eyes of, you know, just having another person, that they are being used appropriately and that we have the appropriate documentation, all the payments run through the business office, who approves them before any expenditures are made.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
When you were talking about the E rebate?
Yep.
That went back to the bond fund?
Yes.
Not to the capital projects fund, or do you include the bond fund under the capital project?
Yep, we include the bond fund as the capital projects, yep.
Under the capital projects, okay.
But it's not the capital projects fund we were referring to earlier this evening with regard to central office.
Correct. This goes back to the same bond fund, which will, will be under the same regulations that the original money was spent under.
Yep.
You can only use it on allowable bond purchases.
Which is what the, the community voted on.
Yes.
Correct. So the refund of the money came back and will continue to use that in the same manner that we've used all of the bond fund.
That's correct.
Bond fund money, okay.
And so that money too will go under the same audit, we have an external audit, actually two auditors that look at our bond funds, and what they do is look at our ballot language to see what was requested of the community, they too look at what came from the Department of Treasury to make sure, you know, what's allowable and not, and so they audit all of our expenditures to make sure that we are using them as we said that we would and that is compliant with the law.
Okay, perfect. Other questions? Anybody else? Okay, up.
I'm trying to turn it off.
Off? Not on? Okay. So we're going to see a motion on Monday for this?
Yes, please, yes.
And if anybody has any questions between now and then, I know that's a lot to absorb, make sure that you give your questions to Mrs. Oakwist and she can pass those on to Mrs. Smith, and if you think of anything between now and then, we get those answers for you.
Thank you all, I appreciate the time.
And that concludes finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That'll take us to item four, our building and site committee, and I'll turn it over to our chair, Mr. Centers.
All right. So this evening, we have three items. Item A is roofing projects for the 20, for 2020, using sinking fund, Mr. Francis, and friends will be joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Joining me to my right is Mr. Scott Smith and Mr. Brian Weber from Plant Ram Cressa Owners Representatives. You know the, the organization well, and you know Mr. Smith quite well from the bond work as well as sinking fund projects that we've had. Mr. Weber has been working with LaVonia Public Schools, beginning back in the spring of 19, winter 19, I think it might have been, because it was definitely for the 19 project.
Probably athletic fields.
Summer 18, oh, that's right.
Probably athletic fields.
Time flies. Thank you. Boy, boy.
And is an LPS parent.
Yes, yes, and is an LPS parent, and where, where are the kids going to be going?
Roswell.
All right. So they, they are joining me today to discuss the roofing project. I want to set up, I know you have the packet, you have my memo, you have the Plant Ram letter, which also has with it the Roofing Technologies Associates letters and recommendations, but just for everyone at home who, who hasn't seen these items yet, like the board has at our study session, we're talking about for the summer of 2020, full roof replacements at the LaVonia Current Technical Center, Rosedale Elementary and Emerson Middle School. So we are here to talk about the bid results, as well as a recommendation of, of vendors, so. With that, I think I can let, you're going to be yourself or, okay? So you know how to use that one right there? And just kind of start it off.
Right in the center.
Yeah, you just, just tap it. There you go. It's our fun for the evening, watching you all work on that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So it's our privilege to be back to present some more roofing recommendations for this summer. Last year, we just were limited to Johnson, this summer, we've got three projects, as Mr. Francis mentioned. Actually pleased with the, some good news today, some of the budgets we had set aside based on results from last year, for whatever reason, are actually have come in under that, so when we get into the details, you'll see that we're under budget. We're actually also recommending an alternate over at the Career Center as well in this, and also very pleased with the bid coverage. So this, this started back in November, when we bid out the work. We actually took bids in early to mid-December. Had started our due diligence period reviewing the results at that time, then kind of the holidays hit us and we didn't feel like our due diligence was complete at that time, so resumed that in early January, and now I have concluded on that as a, as a team and are pleased to kind of present the recommendation here with the roofs. So just getting into it, we are recommending two different firms that span the three projects, or the three roofs. The first big project in here is Emerson Middle School, and in this instance, we are actually recommending the second bidder, and this was probably the bulk of our due diligence, just making sure we understood the qualifications, the attributes and such of, of the bidding firms. Emerson's a large school, it's significantly bigger than Johnson last year, it is the same type of operation where we'd be removing the entire roof, existing roofs, I should say, and getting down to the existing deck, and that, that took a large number of crews, a large number of days last summer, it basically took us the full summer to complete. With this being an even bigger roof, we knew the task was large, we needed to make sure we had the right team that we felt most comfortable with, that could complete the work, that had the most available manpower, that had a great track record of completing projects timely. In this instance, we felt like the second bidder, which was Royal Roofing, provided that. Their bid results were also very favorable under budget, so for Emerson, we are actually recommending the second low bidder, which is Royal Roofing. For the other two projects that are smaller in nature, Rosedale Elementary, one of the smallest, probably the smallest elementary school in the district from a square footage size, we're recommending the low bidder there, which is Quality Roofing. They were the low bidder on the Emerson project, we just felt more comfortable with them in that capacity on that project. And as we've said in other projects such as paving, you know, we're always looking for quality, good, good vendors to work with, we've got a significant amount of roofing projects that we want to complete in the next 10 years under the current sinking fund. This would be a great time to understand their qualities on a smaller project, let them knock it out of the park, and then understand what they can or can't do in the future. So that's a recommendation there, they were the low bidder. And then the third roof, which is over at the Career Center, we're recommending the low bidder there, which is Royal Roofing for theirs, and as you'll see, we're also recommending the alternate, which is actually re-roofing the auto shop. And just a little bit of discussion on that is that when, when we went back to the, the plans that RTA, our roofing consultant, had submitted in terms of the conditions of the various roofs, for whatever reason, the shop area graded out a little bit better than, say, the rest of the, and, and because of the way that building is set up, it's kind of a geographically isolated area, that we wanted to look at it, you know, depending on how the bids came in and such, you know, could that be an area that could be deferred a little farther? But the reality is, bids came in good, that roof is probably of similar age as the rest, and while it may have graded out, that assessment was done a couple of years ago, we're in a favorable position with the bid results, and therefore, as a team, we felt it was prudent to recommend it here in this recommendation.
On that note, the, the reason for the alternate was really to protect the district in, in pricing, not knowing how it would come out and presuming it would have been higher from our estimates from the two previous summers, so that's what, what, what Mr. Smith is talking about. Our intention, our desire would be to do it all at one time where we have a quality company on the site, but to protect us with regard to escalating costs, it was easy to take that section, make an alternate, and it worked out in our favor.
I'm assuming too, though, if we, even if we decided not to do it this year and went back a following year, if they had to bring out a crew on site for just that one area, we may have seen a higher?
Yeah, our, our attention on that.
Higher bid results come back on that isolated area.
There's always cost to remobilize and establish the, the setup, they've got all the dumpsters and the logistics and the fencing to?
Right.
Our general plan would have been to add that piece to the Churchill, a portion of Churchill when that was bid, so that at least geographically, it's right across the street, so the mobilization wouldn't have been quite as, as significant, they just would have to come across.
Okay.
But it worked out in our favor, so we, we, our recommendation would be to, you know, proceed forward with it, since, since it is in our favor.
And then just, if I could, just real quick, from a, from a pure budget, we had budgeted $3.57 million for those three roofs. With the recommendation here today, that's $2,849,463 in actual bids, we are recommending an eight percent contingency, as we've done in the past, so the total recommendation to be reviewed next meeting would be for $3,77,420, using those two firms, as, as noted earlier.
So we're approximately $770,000 under budget?
That's with the?
Correct. With the contingency. That's with the contingency with the second bidder and the alternate.
And the alternate being added.
And these would be the, these would be the full roofs on all three buildings?
Yes, so it was, like I said, it was a favorable bid, we had a range of, of pricing, we did have good coverage, and a few companies just went, went at it more aggressively.
Great.
Any questions? Yeah, it's, it's good to see the work get done and under budget as well, so looking forward to seeing it moved on. All right, that means we'll move on to?
We ask for that to be on the regular meeting.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. I think, I think that was it for you guys, right?
Thanks for joining us, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that brings us to item B, which is the high school fieldhouse curtain dividers. This will be a sinking fund purchase, Mr. Francis.
Yes, thank you very much. The three high schools have the fieldhouses that were put on in the early 2000s, there are three courts at each fieldhouse, so there's two divider curtains in each fieldhouse that can divide out those three courts. This is a purchase to replace, so there's six of them there, if you're, if you're trying to figure out where we're taking six of them with, with three buildings, and it's a purchase to replace the current, current curtains that are the dividers. I should probably not phrase it as such, it's difficult to say, current curtains. So they are, the current, the current curtains that are there are in, they're, they're tattered, they've been used for a very long time, and they are in need of replacement. We've been holding out on, on replacing them to try to get as much use and life out of them as possible, but we did go to bid, and we have a low bid from CNM Associates for $39,885. When you do the math on that for six different curtains, it's actually an excellent price. So we were very pleased, you can see we had, we had a more than double on, on one of the bids for, for that total cost, so.
Always good to steal a local company on there.
And a local company out of LaVonia, Michigan, so we're excited for these bid results, we were excited that a local company had, had made it low, and we are pleased to recommend CNM Associates for the high school fieldhouse curtain job.
Okay, Mrs. Bradford.
Hi, just a quick question, thanks. The curtains, I, I noticed, at least at Stevenson, they'll be matching the colors of the fieldhouses or the, the school colors and everything, correct?
We, we, we will have conversations with CMN, CNM, with regard to colors, curtains at individual buildings.
And they'll be similar to what they have right now? Will they be durable?
Yes, the curtain itself will be similar, I don't want to promise the exact colors because after 17 years or wherever it's been, I don't know that we're going to have an exact match, so that's why I'm hedging slightly on an exact match.
Sure, but they'll be similar to what's put up there. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Trank.
And just because there's such a discrepancy in price, you were comfortable with the quality of the, of the material it's going to be?
Yes, that was, that was the first question that we had with them. The product itself is, the specs on it are the same across the bids, so.
How old were the other curtains? I missed that.
I believe they're original materials, but I can confirm that and shoot you an email back.
Okay, I just wondered, how long do these curtains normally last?
They get a lot of use, though.
I know, they go up and down a lot.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll confirm whether they are the originals or if we did replace them at one point, so I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Phil, do you know what the, when they're going to be replaced, how soon?
We'd like to replace them as soon as there's an appropriate time to, to go in and do that, I don't necessarily want to wait until summer to, to have it done.
Is that a, a big project to do, it seems, if it's a curtain?
Well, we might look at spring break or depending on, on timing to, to have that done. I can update the board when, when we, when we have a firm date.
All right, thanks.
Right now, we just want to make sure that we have the recommendation before we start talking full calendar with the company.
A lot of curtain excitement.
I know.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
So when you say original equipment, this, these curtains are 50 years old?
No, no, the fieldhouses were built in the early 2000s.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
So my other question is?
That would have been great value for the money, though.
Sorry, I'm, so, I'm not originally from LaVonia, so I missed that. Are they doing anything with the har, is the hardware that's in there all in good shape?
You're talking about the?
The motors.
I'm assuming that there's motors and, I don't know how, I don't spend obviously as much time in fieldhouses as Mrs. Bradford does, but just, they're in good working order, we don't need to replace any, it's just the, the curtain?
I'll confirm, but, but work with Mr. Lau, and he headed up the, the project of, of inspection as well as recommendation to, to move forward to replace, I'll confirm with him on, on those other items.
Okay.
Because generally, he's of, of the ilk of, you wouldn't want to replace one piece if, if, if any other part wasn't also ready to be either repaired or replaced at the same time.
Sure, sure.
So knowing his track record, but I'll, I'll have a conversation with him tomorrow just to confirm that, that we've put eyes on everything.
Well, so I guess then the thing is, is if, is it in enough working order to last another 20 years? Would, I guess would be my question.
Well, well, if they haven't been inspected, we'll, we'll work on getting, getting that confirmed.
But you know, if the curtains are going to last 20 years, then the hardware that they're hanging from is going to need to?
Yeah.
I mean, and not that we couldn't get that stuff replaced in another five years, but?
I'll get you the details on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mrs. Bradford.
That was my question about the motors, how the motors are working, thanks.
Great, anything else? All righty, that, and, regular agenda?
Oh, yes.
Regular meeting?
And we'll follow up with those four questions in the update on Thursday, so you can have that information well in advance of, of the meeting.
All right, our final item is letter C, shared time and adult ed carpet. So this is from section 107, the adult ed grants, Mr. Francis.
Thank you for mentioning the grant, this is actually a project that will not be from a general fund or, or any of our sinking fund, it is actually a specific grant from the State of Michigan for adult education programs. Our program administrator for the adult ed programs has put in for and received approval for the, the carpet replacement in portions of the, the circle where they work, the rooms where the adult ed program, as well as shared time and, pardon me, adult ESL programs are all housed together. So it's the office area for them, as well as the, the rooms around the circle. And this work we're aiming to do over the spring break period while we have a gap in time from when the staff will not be there, nor adult ed students.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
That was going to be my question, is, we do have students in there, I mean, we utilize not only as office space, but as classroom space.
There's lab space and classroom space for adult education, students for adult ESL adult ESL students, as well as our shared time teachers utilize this space when they, because our shared time teachers go out to other parochial schools. That is their home base to come back and work.
Got it.
So it's a multiple-use area, but we do have, like I said, adult ed students that come in, which is why we're going to wait until spring break to be able to do the work.
Nice. I'm glad, it seems like they're going to start maybe a little light carpet and stuff like that, that they're happy there, and that that was a good fit for them to move into that area, so I'm happy to hear that.
And it's a good use of the funds for the grant money.
Anything else? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm just amazed that this is the original carpet for that building?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, I'd have to confirm, was that mine or Mr. Lau's memo that it was original, the carpet?
I think that's in, let's see, that's Mr. Lau's memo.
Okay. I'll check them. Yeah, I'll check them.
It's well-used.
Yeah. Wow.
That's one way to put it.
All right, anything else?
All right, and you're going to have, you've got
This will be for regular, please.
Yep. Okay, great. That concludes building insight. Mr. Francis, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Five, our curriculum committee, turning it over to Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you. Thank you, President Johnson. We have two items on the curriculum committee tonight. The first is professional development advisory committee with Mrs. O'Brien.
Good, how are you?
I am here this evening to talk to you a little bit about some changes in the School Aid Act that happened this fall that we would like to utilize for some professional development. So last fall, they made some changes that came into being in October of last year where we could count professional development as student clock hours. This was a change several years ago. We, sorry, just touched it.
Let's try the other one. Switch.
It's on. I can do it. Okay, let's try that again. Sorry about that. So we would like to take advantage of the changes in the School Aid Act that would allow counting professional development as student clock hours. Several years ago, about five years ago, the law changed the other way. So previously, we had been counting professional development days as student days. The state of Michigan changed that. We had to add 10 days back into our calendar that were professional development. We had to add 10 days for students. They
have now made it more flexible, but it's not as open as it was previously. So this would allow up to 38 hours a year, with some caps on the number of hours you counted in a given month, how many you counted at the beginning of a year. And this time would be allowed if you followed certain requirements. So those requirements would be that it would be aligned to our district improvement plan, which all of our professional development is aligned to our district improvement plan, and to our evaluation tool. So you would want to make sure that you had a link there. And then, the other piece would is you would apply for sketches, which are clock hours that teachers apply for, for renewal of their certificate when they attend professional development. We would need to do that for any hours that we utilize within this law. The piece that I also would need your support with is the establishment of a board-appointed professional development advisory committee, comprised of teachers and staff, support staff, and that committee would meet and give direction as to what the district's professional development needs are. So I am coming to you to ask for your approval to establish a committee for advising the district on professional development. I would be proposing having several K-6 teachers, some K-12 special teachers, so some art, music, PE, a few, some special education teachers, some support staff, like an EST or an ESAP counselor, and then some secondary teachers, and then parents, would comprise this committee. And then, as you know, we have decided to have a professional development day on March 10th because it is a Michigan primary, and so we would like to apply to have those counted as student hours under this change. So we would go through the process. Once you, if you would be willing to approve this committee, we'd have that committee meet, we'd follow the other guidelines and restrictions put into place by the law, and then March 10th would count as student hours.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Bonnefield?
It sounds, I'm very excited about it. I think it's great. But do we have the resources, the personnel and resources? I know that sometimes those that volunteer are always the ones that raise their hand, and here we have yet another committee, substantial committee. Are we going to be able to tap into some resources and give some opportunities to individuals that may not already be able to, or not involved in some of these committees, and be able to provide some ability for some of those other people to, I'm babbling, sorry. You contribute. Thank you, you know where I'm going.
Certainly, certainly. Yep, and I mean, we would work with, you know, some administrators and some community groups, some Mrs. Jenkins, to gather some names of some people. We would also want them to be people who'd be interested in talking about professional development. So there's always that balance, but always giving new people an opportunity to have a voice and be on a committee, I think, is a wonderful thing.
Mrs. Bradford.
I think this is a great idea. I'm all for it. My question is, do we have to have the committee in place prior to March 10th, so we need to, like, move on this pretty quickly?
Yes.
And how many people need to be on this board? I mean, is there a number of people, or there's no restrictions?
There isn't.
It has to be the majority teachers.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
This is more, a more general question, really. In going over the board bylaws, Mrs. O'Quist, when you and I were going over recent board bylaws, because we're updating that section of our policy book at this time, we came upon one of the bylaws that discussed board-appointed committees. And the fact that really the board does not appoint many of any committees that we could think of at the time, and then, lo and behold, the next week, here, we have one. To your knowledge, either of you, Mrs. O'Brien or Mrs. O'Quist, to your knowledge, is there any other board-appointed, or any direction that the board appoint committees? Because typically, this happens that the district appoints committees. This is unusual phrasing to me.
It is, and it really is because it is a tenet of the law.
Okay.
That the board approved the committee. The board is actually not appointing the committee. The board is approving the creation of a committee. And so, the only guideline on that, it is made up primarily of teachers, which is appropriate, because the professional development is to be focused on their professional development. So the board is approving the district to create this committee.
Okay, that makes much more sense.
As opposed to appointing the actual members of the committee.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that if we, once we did this, which I'm definitely in favor of us doing, that we weren't going to need to make another change
Yes.
Later on this evening, we're discussing. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Thank you. I'll try and phrase this one a little bit better.
Okay.
So, when we're talking about this, on the surface, it sort of looks like we're creating this committee and doing all this work so that we can have a PD day on the primary day. Can you maybe talk about the intent with this committee?
Sure.
That there's a little more
Sure. So I think it's a nice opportunity, just like when, sometimes laws get passed that creates some work, but you can also take it as an opportunity to do something different. So it would be my plan to continue this committee and possibly meet twice a year, like at the end in June, to think about what would be important to start the year off with our PD, and then maybe somewhere later in the fall to reflect on the professional development that we offered, and kind of continue looking at that plan. It would be a nice opportunity to talk about our school improvement plans and what professional development align with that, too. So for myself and my department, I think it's a nice opportunity for us to gather stakeholder feedback on professional development.
Any other questions? I just want to comment, so that this isn't confusing to our community, because we did put out a communication on this last week. So folks might be saying, well, if the board hasn't approved the committee, how could we do that? So our decision to not hold school on March 10th due to the challenges, disruption, and changes to our safety protocols on an election day, our decision to not hold school on that day is a decision we are able to make without the vote of the Board of Education. Certainly, we consulted with you. You were all in full consensus and agreement on that, and so we did move ahead so we could communicate that to families as soon as possible. So what we are, the next step we are now taking is ensuring that we don't lose any instructional hours according to state guidelines by requesting that these hours be translated to professional development hours. And that process has a very delineated number of steps that we have to follow and that Mrs. O'Brien is seeing us through. So I just wanted to make sure that if we had folks listening and saying, well, we've already announced that we're doing that. We indeed are, because this entire group came to consensus last week that we were more comfortable not having students in session on a voting day. And from the feedback we've received, we, our community appears to be certainly in support of that. So now what we're doing is going to the next step to say, let's not use, lose any time with regard to the state requirements, and be able to qualify those hours for PD. Hopefully, that provides a clarification. Thank you. Then, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to the second item.
So can we put that on?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Calculators for secondary schools.
Thank you. You got emailed a quote today. It got sent late, so I just want to make sure everyone has one. So we are looking to use the 2013 bond instructional materials portion of the bond to purchase some new calculators for our middle schools and our high school math classes. So we are looking to purchase 60 per building, which would be 360 total graphing calculators. The purpose of this is to provide our math classrooms additional calculators than what they have for kids to check out and use at school. It would also be an opportunity to look at the older ones, and some of the science teachers have asked, could they, they don't need graphing calculators to the same level as our mathematics classes do, especially in the high school, but could use some, so that then they would share the extra calculators with the science department.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Burton?
In what ledger does it come from?
The bond, instructional, yep. So the instructional materials portion of the bond.
Okay, thank you.
So this bid, this quote is for $52,872.84.
President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Your memo, Mrs. O'Brien, says 60, and this, the quote is for 36.
So it's 60 per building, and they come in sets of 10. So it's 36, six buildings, 60 each, 360. So it's 36 sets of 10 calculators, which would give us 360.
Gives you 360. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
60 per building, middle school and high school, six buildings, 360 calculators. They come with a charging station, so they
36 packs of 10?
36 packs of 10. So that should have been, the quote came in after the memo, and so the memo was six, so it's called the teacher pack, and so it's a set of 10.
Mrs. Frank?
I'm sorry if you already said this. Will the building administrator decide who gets them? If it will be the math teacher or the science teacher, or they've already decided who's going to get these? Right, because there's more than 60 in math and science at each building?
So we're purchasing 60 for the math department, and then they will share the older ones that they don't, that don't need as high a functioning
Right.
With the science department.
Okay.
So Mr. Hillard, over the last couple of years, has replaced ones that didn't work. So they are not, they are not without calculators. With the updated textbooks, they're using the graphing functions more, and so this was something that was requested. And so then, one of our high schools suggested that they talk to the science departments and find out what their needs are. So they're going to work it out within the building, how they're sharing the calculators.
But it will basically only be two teachers will get?
Two class sets. But typically, I mean, you know, maybe if I'm teaching, I'm sharing with another student, and I only need half a class set.
Yeah.
And that's the nice thing, is what the math chairs, when I went to the chair meeting, is in the sets of 10, and they have the charger, so that then, and some students have their own calculators. So not every student needs one from the teacher. So they've got them, they can be broken up in multiple ways.
Any other questions or comments? And this should go on the, on the voting for Monday.
Yep.
Thank you. President Johnson, that's all for the curriculum committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That'll move us to item six, our policy committee, and our Chair, Vice President Burton.
Thank you. We have been working our way through the policy book diligently. Thank you to our board and our cabinet team and our superintendent for continuing this work. It is lengthy, but it's really important. This evening, we have a number of policies, all that are actually bylaws of the board, in that, that means it really governs how the board does its work, as opposed to how those in the district do their work. Mrs. O'Quist and I have been going over several of these, and we have brought some to a study session last Monday night, and we're ready to pursue the conversation. Most of these are just pretty much, pretty perfunctory, bringing up the language up to current terminology, or making sure that they are complying with current law. But, Mrs. O'Quist, I'm going to turn the first one over to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We did go through each of these, and we've made changes as recommended last week in our study session. And so what I will do is review the areas marked in red, which are the changes to the policy or any strike through. Bylaws of the board, policy BA. In the third paragraph, it states that all employees are expected to, it initially said, carry out the policies and administrative procedures of the district, and we thought it was more appropriate to say adhere to, and so you'll see that change. And then we added a sentence at the end. Students, parents, and stakeholders must abide by policies and procedures that are applicable to them. We then also changed the areas to cross-reference in the policy manual.
Any questions or comments on this policy, or bylaw, actually, bylaw? Okay, let's go on?
Thank you. Bylaws of the board, BAA. We changed board operations and goal-setting meetings to indicate that at least two times each year, with the superintendent in the board, we would review the goals and priorities of the school district. Initially, it had said the direction and focus. As you know, we set goals and priorities based on our strategic plan and our shared vision. We also deleted the timeline that required the months in which those would be scheduled, and stuck with at least two times a year.
Any questions or comments? Terrific. Going on?
Bylaws of the board, BBA. This is regarding school board officers, which is timely, since we'll be taking that item up next week. It indicates that the three positions of president, vice president, and secretary are elected annually, and the treasurer are elected annually from members of the Board of Education, and that the treasurer of our school district shall not be a member of our board, but instead shall be an employee under contract with the Livonia Public Schools School District, and shall be appointed by be held by a member of the staff, as opposed to the board. And the question was, for how many years have we proceeded with that practice? And in 1959, it was the first time a member of the staff was named treasurer of the board, rather than a member of the board. It has been that way since that time.
Mrs. Frank?
Just a thought that I was thinking right now. Does it need to say we should, that they shall be appointed by the board annually? Or, well, elected annually, it says vice president, president, secretary are elected annually, so I just don't know if we need to put that down at the end of Board of Education for it?
It sounds appropriate.
It's self-explanatory.
No, I like, I like the addition.
It puts it in agreement with the other positions.
Can I, instead of being redundant with it, in the next paragraph, can we say, add it to the first sentence, where it says the officers, the board shall be president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer, and shall be elected annually, rather than having it elected annually in two separate sentences?
But it's two separate.
The treasurer isn't being elected, they're being appointed.
Oh. Okay. Sorry. Got it?
Right. Any other questions on this? Okay. And moving on?
Bylaws of the board, B-B-A-A, the method of electing board officers. Just to clarify, we added a few words in the first sentence. We added the word board, so all board officers, just to clarify that piece, and then added the word regular in the first three bulleted sentences, three bulleted paragraphs, to indicate that it is the first regular board meeting following the vacancy. So, this policy refers to, if a vacancy occurs, if, it would have read earlier, before the first board meeting following the vacancy, that could have been a study session or a committee meeting, and votes such as these would take place at a regular meeting. So, we added the word regular. And then, if there's a vacancy with regard to the treasurer position, it indicates the superintendent shall make a recommendation of the Board of Education as to the finance department employee who will assume the responsibilities of this position.
Are we comfortable with that? Okay. Any, no other questions or comments on it? All right. Go on.
B-B-A-B-A, duties of the president. The only thing that we changed on this, we kept the duties the same. We added the word committee meetings, because initially, in the opening sentence, we had listed that the president shall preside at all regular meetings, special meetings, closed sessions, and study sessions. Although, in some language, in some districts, the word special meeting also refers to a committee meeting. This district clearly states when we have a committee meeting, and so, we thought it was appropriate to clarify that the president would also proceed over committee meetings. And then, we changed the legal reference at the bottom of the page.
Any questions or comments?
Just glad to see we cleaned that up a little bit.
Yep.
And the next one.
Bylaws of the board, B-B-A-B-B, duties of the vice president. The only thing that we added in the first sentence was that the vice president shall act in the temporary absence of the president when requested by the board, by, when requested by the president or authorized by the board. Previously, it had simply said authorized by the board, and oftentimes, this would take place if the president had to be absent for a meeting, or perhaps was going to be running late, and the board president would ask the vice president to do that. And so, that really follows current practice of the board.
Any other questions? All right. Next.
Bylaws of the board, B-B-A-B-C. This is duties of the board secretary. So, we made two changes here. We indicated that in this paragraph, we are referring to the board secretary, as opposed to the secretary to the Board of Education. And then, we also removed a portion of the sentence that talked about preserving and filing copies and keeping books and documents, because those responsibilities really fall under the purview of our administrative assistant to the Board of Education, as opposed to the board's secretary.
Any questions? Move on.
Bylaws of the board, B-B-A-B-E, duties of the treasurer. We have strike through the first two sentences. We incorporated the first sentence of this bylaw into a later, a later bylaw. And then, the second one, we incorporated into an earlier bylaw. So, that information is not being removed, per se, from the bylaws in their entirety. They're simply being removed from this particular bylaw and added to others where we felt it was more appropriately placed. This indicates that it is the responsibility of the treasurer to have oversight of the monies of the district. It previously said the care and custody of all monies. So, truly, it is to have oversight and to perform such duties as prescribed by the super, we added the word superintendent and before Board of Education.
Any questions? All right. We'll go on.
Thank you. Bylaws of the board, B-B-B-B, new board member orientation. This bylaw had the most updates, and the, some language, the intent overall is to carefully lay out the expectations for new board members who are joining the Board of Education. And so, in the first paragraph, we speak to adding the word board in front of member. And previously, the word problems was included in there in reference to informed about the board's functions, policies, procedures, and problems. So, where that word occurred, we have replaced it with current issues. In the first bullet, it indicates that the new board member shall be expected to attend a new board member orientation session by M A S B, with tuition and expenses paid by the board. The second one indicates that the new board member is encouraged to attend all board meetings that are open to the public, and it also indicates that the new board member may be invited to attend additional Board of Education functions, as is currently the case. The third one indicates, again, we utilize the word priorities in this case instead of problems. And in the fourth one, talked about the newborn member is to be provided with copies of or access to all appropriate publications and guides. That's primarily because so much of the information the board receives now is electronic. And so, referring to access to, as opposed to copies of, allows for either electronic or print materials to be provided. In number five, it indicates that along with the board president and members of the administrative staff, the superintendent would also confer with the new board member, which is current practice, on current topics, issues, or priorities before the board. And then, finally, this indicates that the new board member should, shall receive orientation on the educational landscape of Michigan, instruction and study, and school finance, school law, responsiveness to the community, ethics, duties, and responsibilities of board members, as well as the evaluation of the superintendent. We added a cross-reference to B-B-B-C.
Questions or comments on this policy? President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. On number one, it says tuitions and expenses to be paid by the board. The board really doesn't pay the expenses.
The district.
Maybe by the district at, with approval of the board, because we do now approve.
Mrs. Oquist?
Yes.
One, and item two, I think we stated it verbally, but the way we've got it written used a different word. We have it written, new board members are, of course, welcome to attend all board meetings. I think the word that we had talked about using was encouraged, or strongly encouraged.
That, I do see encouraged on there?
Strange. Mine says welcome.
Are you on the electronic copy?
Mm-hmm. Mine says welcome.
I am, I have print copy, and I'm wondering if there is a difference, so let me just take a look.
Well, yours is the way we had talked about wanting it, we, meaning it in the study session, the group talked about encouraged, as opposed to welcome.
I believe that the copy that is uploaded is not the most current copy. So, why don't I read number two, as I have it printed in front of me?
Okay.
Which I believe reflects our changes.
Mm-hmm.
The new board member is encouraged to attend all board meetings that are open to the public. In the interim between the appointment and actually assuming office, the new board member may be invited to attend additional Board of Education functions.
Yes. Yours, yours is the more polished version.
Mm-hmm.
Could you also read what you have for item four?
Yes. The new board member is to be provided with copies of or access to all appropriate publications and guides, including the board policy and publication of the state, and publications of the State School Board Association.
Okay. The board policy, that's singular, and we really need to have it be plural.
How about taking off the word the?
Right. And change policy to policies.
Oh.
Because heaven knows, we don't have one. Yeah. Are there any other suggestions, questions, comments? Mrs. Frank?
Just a clarification, in the bottom paragraph, I think it's really well written. Do we want to be specific enough to say who is going to provide that training? I think when we came in, your staff did an amazing job of meeting everyone, but are we going to leave that all up to cabinet, or don't put more detail in the, in the bylaw than we need to have? I just didn't know if we should say, if we need to be a little bit more clarifying in terms of not putting that all on your cabinet, but-
For the final paragraph?
Right.
So, some of that is done in-house, and some of that is also by the state organization, by M A S B?
Right. So, I just didn't know if you wanted to say that by both, or, or if we don't need to be that specific.
If we're going to be specific on it at all, we really, the three entities that I see involved are the superintendent and cabinet team, state organizations, and the board itself.
Yeah.
I would think we would either not address it at all, or list all three entities.
Right.
And I'm comfortable either way you want to go with it. It doesn't matter to me. Does anyone have opinions on that? Mrs. Bradford?
I think I would leave it out, because then, you're really specifically, you're naming those three, which I get, but it opens it, it lends yourself to be able to be a little more flexible-
That's true.
-on who's, who's going to be doing the training.
Because it could be Wayne County Association of School Boards.
Right. It could be Lisa, it could be any-
Another board.
Yes.
It could be, you know, we brought in Len and Sue before to work with the board.
I think you're limiting yourself if you name just those three.
Good idea. Yep. Any other questions or comments on this policy specifically? Nope. That. That's the last policy we need to go over. We can, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please put this on the agenda for a first reading? And we can put these all in one group for a first reading. We don't need to approve, or discuss them as separate items on the agenda. They can be one group item on the agenda.
Perfect.
And then, when we get to the point, the following, assuming everything goes smoothly, which it usually does, at a first reading, same thing, second reading, we can vote on these collectively, not with seven votes, but with one.
Okay.
And President Johnson, that concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That takes us to item seven, personnel committee, and Mrs. Frank.
I don't believe we have anything for personnel.
Can we do this?
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. That takes us to item eight, legislative committee. Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you, President Johnson. I do not believe we have anything for tonight, do we?
We do have.
Thank you.
Wow. All right.
This is nice.
Then, we are at the, the end of our agenda, so that concludes our committee of the whole meeting, and then, we'll just proceed to our closed session. All right. Thank you. Did we?
Do you want to go into, we need to-
Do you want to go right to?
Yeah.
Okay. Give me two seconds here.
Krista?
Okay. Then, we'll go right into our special, our special meeting of the Board of Education for January 21st, 2020. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Here.
Here. Yes, here. I'm here.
Everybody turn your speakers. Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum that takes us to item two, audience communication. I do not have any blue slips as it relates to the special meeting, and I do not see any one coming to the table, so that'll take us to item three, recess to closed session. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Centers?
Moved at the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District, recess to closed session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Therefore, we will move into closed session, and we will not be coming back on camera when we-
No, the board will report out on the evaluation as part of next week's personnel items. I thought you could say that.
Your mic's not on.
I knew.
All right. We will report out after the closed session at our next regular meeting. Thank you.